Budget in such a way that, I mean, homes are zoned the same day right now if you go on. So I just need to be able to put down there, at least put down the entry in the contract, put the deposit down, and then bring it back depending on appraisal. There's some, still some NRS requirements, I think, for acquisition of properties, so.
Um, did you have a, an amount in mind going back to the one item for grant matches?
I was thinking, and this again is dependent on what we see net proceeds this year coming. I would like to see a half million set in there that would be used for grant matches. And of course, grants are approved by the county commission. The applications are approved, so you would know at that time if we were going to use any of that match.
We're going after some big grants right now.
Yeah.
Is this legal, Mike or James? Because we're dealing with county money and then we're going to buy a home. I mean, that's the only, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I, I mean, off the top of my head, I, there's a few issues I'd want to look into.
Right.
But there's nothing that would prevent us from going forward as far as earmarking that money right now.
Back to Elizabeth's comment, I think a half a million dollars is a little high. I think if we can stay at a lesser amount based on what the average cost of a home, a three bedroom, two bath, whatever you've got, but a half a million dollars to invest to buy a house is, to me, is a little steep.
Have you looked up, are houses over where we live?
Yeah.
Turning out three hundred grand.
I, I know, but a half a million is what I'm saying.
Yeah, if you're going to, you're going to easily spend a half a million. There's a three bedroom, two bath, new construction on the terrace at four and a quarter right now.
Especially if you buy more than one unit, that might, yeah.
And I apologize if I answered that question wrong. My understanding was, the question was, what is the amount that you are recommending for grant match?
Grant match is what, is what I missed.
Earlier, and I said a half million dollars.
So the half million, okay, I'm, I misunderstood, okay.
I did not put a number to the homes, but I would agree that right now the market is very high.
Okay, that answered that, thank you.
Okay, and, and I'll come back with some more definite numbers. These were some ideas that the county manager had that I think, you know, we want to address if we can in next year's budget and this year's budget even if, if possible. But I do think there are some legal issues. We want to make sure that we proceed in a manner that is consistent with NRS, obviously. But yeah, getting budget set aside is something we can do right now. And then if we don't spend it, as always, it falls back to your fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, our revenue picture looks strong and, and we do have a lot of, of some new items that we looked at. I think we've got some wiggle room and I think these are all good ideas that, that we really need to consider squeezing in. I, I was curious on the insurance with full pack, what, that eight percent increase? What does that translate to in dollars and cents?
That, I'm, I don't have a specific number and I apologize for that. The reason is, is because that will be offset by our experience modifier. So I didn't get that final number in yet. Once I have the experience modifier, because our experience in this fiscal year was good, which impacts next year's rate. So they set a rate for all entities. And then based on your volume and your experience modifier, you have your final amount that will be due in payment.
Do they just use a one-year window for the experience modifier or is that based over several years?
It's based over several years.
But last year pulls our average down.
Yes, and we've been doing very, very well as far as trending outward. And I anticipate that will continue.
Excellent. Anyone else? Anything else on your budget?
No, unless there are questions or anything else that the county commission would like me to go ahead and proceed as far as investigation on their behalf for next year.
Anyone? Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
She covered it, thank you.
Okay, so I think if there's no other comments on this, we can look for a motion to approve that.
I don't think there's nothing we're approving.
I said discussion, but actually it's all under the item five.
And, yeah, if we want to leave it at discussion only, I'm fine with that.
It's pleasure of the board. Okay, so would the board like to just leave it at discussion? Okay, so just leave it as discussion until we can get further information on it. Item six, page three, is discussion for possible action, approval of amendments from the special joint meeting with the county commission on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. Any additions, subtractions, or corrections? Anyone guiding? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And I do have a, a little housekeeping request. I would like to see that when it says special joint meeting, that it's specific, just on the agenda item when it goes to the public. Because we have, I mean, it's not often, but we meet, we have joint meetings with community, you know, towns and cities and the fire district, just as a, keeping it clean. It looked like it was a shortcut to me, just special meeting.
It says special joint meeting with the county commission here. And on the county commission side, it says special joint meeting with the fire commission. Is that?
I, I, I did notice that because I did read, you know, whole minutes and stuff, so. Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'll second. Okay, motion by Lori and a second by Travis. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passionate others. Last item in this is public comment on page three. Does anybody have any public comment on what we just discussed on the budget rating? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I don't want the county in the housing business. I've got property that I can't use now, got to compete against you guys, let alone other individuals in this community, this county that have invested in this community. And now we're looking at having the county compete. That's wrong. Those people that impact this community, mining, whatever it is, they also have an obligation to step up and provide the housing for those people they plan to bring in. They're not doing that. As a taxpayer, I don't want to supplement them while I sit on my property, getting citations, moving people off that have rented from me. That's discrimination. Also, I had my hand up earlier, I can't hear Mr. Weble at times. You need to do something about the sound system. I didn't want to be rude and interrupt, but next time I'm going to. You have to speed up. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else with public comment, either in the building or on the phone? Anybody on the phone? We haven't heard from you today. Anybody, Mike? Hearing none, okay, we're going to move on to our nine thirty. We just passed that. Page three at nine thirty, this is a public hearing for an appeal. Item one is a public hearing, discussion for possible action. The White Plains County Board of County Commissioners will reconsider an application for reclassification of property zoning denied by the RPC on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two for eight P M, zero one zero dash four four zero dash one one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, just quickly wanted to make sure everybody knows I have to leave at ten thirty and I'm going to hop on Zoom. I have to drive to Elko and I'll stay on as long as I can.
Got you. Okay, so I'm glad we're going to get this before we have to leave. Okay, uh, should I start this with public comment? James?
We can, I, I can, I can lay out the basics. So the, the question here is whether to rezone a ranching agricultural plot to a commercial zone. And the, the question that you guys have to answer on appeal is if after the further public hearing, which is this one, is deemed necessary, the county determines that public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice requires a change or reclassification of any portion thereof. So, so that's the question you guys were answering. If there, there's been some allegations that you can't do this legally because of spot zoning, I just wanted to briefly address that because, you know, that I have a very different view on that. And I'm not saying anything about the merits or demerits of this practice. I think there's a lot of good policy reasons to go either way. But spot zoning is when you have one isolated parcel that is for one thing. Um, and then, uh, that, well, that is consistent with everything around it. And then it wants to be rezoned just to alleviate that, um, property owner's restrictions as far as that zoning goes. If it's a part of a, a larger plan, for example, uh, you know, say you wanted to have consistency of commercial zones above the highway or something like that. Part of the larger plan, just the fact that it's one parcel doesn't automatically make it a spot zoning issue. So if, and this, and this would be up to, uh, the board, but if the board finds that, that necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practices, any or all of those, require the change or reclassification of this property, then I believe we can, uh, we can support, uh, that, that in a, in a challenge, in a legal challenge. What, what we need is, uh, well, originally, this, the, the decision of the board is, has a presumption of validity to start with. And then if it's supported with substantial evidence, and that is defined by the courts as evidence which a reasonable mind might accept as adequate support for a conclusion. So if you have, if, if you're convinced with substantial evidence today that it needs to be changed, that's something I think we could support. If you're convinced that, uh, there's not substantial evidence for this change and it doesn't further, uh, the overall goals and plan of the community, then I can defend that in court as well. So either way, um, as long as you, as, as long as you base it on, on some evidence that you've seen in the packets, heard here today, either way, I think I can, um, defend the decision. We also, uh, if, if we get to that point, I have Burton on the line who is more familiar with the zoning and what zonings mean what as far as this area goes. If you have questions, he's available. I'd ask him in advance and not throw him under the bus right now. If he'd be available to kind of explain the zoning map and what the, what the, what zoning, uh, looks like around that area.
I believe that this hearing from Burton right now, for everybody's concern, would be a good idea.
Certainly.
Uh, because I'm not that familiar with it either. So Burton, if you're on the phone, you can kind of give everybody in the audience and whatnot an update on just exactly what the zoning means and what effect it might have. Are you there, Burton?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if my voice allows me to share my screen, um, I think that that would be helpful. Can you hear me?
Yeah, he's doing that right now.
Oh, okay, I just wasn't sure if you heard. So the, the current, the parcel in question is of RA five, which is a residential agricultural area, five acres or, or more. But as soon as we can get it up here, it'll be easier to show you.
Burton, I believe he's giving you permission to share your screen. I think you have to click the button.
All right, do you have it now?
Yeah, it's starting. Yeah, we got it, go ahead.
Okay. This is the parcel in question here where my mouse is around. We have a, a variety of zoning here right across the McGill Highway here. We have C two, which is what the applicant is applying for. So that is, I mean, essentially bordering this parcel. Then you'll see on further left and going down McGill Highway, we have, uh, several C three parcels. Right on that same parcel is the applicant's property. It is, uh, M one, manufacturing. Immediately to the north is industrial park. And then if I continue down, there is RA five in this area, but we also have C three on the other side of the highway. And then C three coming down, um, getting on both sides of the highway, both are towards Ely. And then, um, you'll see more of that C three. So the C three, more consistently than not, the C three borders the McGill Highway. And I will go north of the applicant's property here. We have industrial park, we have the airport. And let it load. Moving it fast with the internet, well. Normally a little faster than this, but, um, so we have RA, RA five throughout here. We do get back into some commercial areas going further north. And then it's, uh, essentially a corridor of commercial along McGill Highway. Once it loads, you'll be able to see that. We have C two here on the highway. And we have C two, C three, and that essentially goes all the way to McGill. The C three, uh, along the highway frontage with the, you know, a little C two. And then we do have the RA five throughout. Do you have any questions on that?
Anybody? No, no, no one yet, Burton.
Okay, so that's, I mean, I, that's the, primarily what I wanted to show you is that there, that we have the C two right across the highway. We have the M one right next to it. And then there is a substantial amount of C three along the entire McGill Highway. Just as a reference, there is also a lot of RA five in that area to the south and to the north. But consistency being right across from C two, um, it's my opinion that that would be a consistent use, but I'm not a legal expert.
Okay, is that, is that it for your presentation, Burton?
That's all I have unless you have some questions for me.
I'm going to address the audience and let them, after seeing what you had, Nicole.
Chairman, I received a, um, comment that I provided to each of you up here at the table. And there's copies in the back for the rest of the public from private citizen Steve Eldebresku. Would you like me to read that to the record?
It's pretty lengthy, isn't it? No, that's not, yeah, go ahead. It's just one page.
It's a part of the record, so it's not necessary, but there's nothing prohibiting you from doing it.
I believe there's people in the audience that would maybe be in favor of this or opposed. Let's hear what he has to say.
Okay.
If you haven't received it yet, go ahead.
Dear board members, I am writing as a private citizen to oppose the proposed zone change in the J and M subdivision on the McGill Highway. I am unable to attend this meeting, so I submit the following. My interest in the matter is twofold. First, I was raised on the five acres owned by my son Nico, some three hundred fifty feet from this proposed commercial zone. There I learned how to grow hay, livestock, and horses. The property is still perfectly suited for those uses. Second, I still own the irrigation water rights, so I do have a protectable legal interest in the property. I submit that the memo I gave to the RPC dated March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two clearly establishes that this application is a request to approve spot zoning, which is not allowed, see exhibit A. Also, please consider the following. Adjacent to this twelve point eight six acre parcel on the McGill Highway is a two point one seven acre parcel that has always been zoned commercial. This two point one seven acre parcel was sold in two thousand nineteen for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to its current owner, see exhibit B. The same owner purchased the twelve point eight six acre parcel, which is zone RA five, in two thousand nineteen for thirty thousand dollars. The owner then fenced off a small portion of the twelve acres with high fence and built a large shop. The twelve point eight six acres were then sold to Mr. Bedrin in two thousand twenty-one for seventy-eight thousand two hundred and four dollars, see exhibit C. At that time, as now, there were many commercial lots available for sale as shown in the attachment to exhibit A. In fact, the five point eight six acre commercial parcel is less than a mile south on the McGill Highway, was purchased by Valley Irrigation in two thousand nineteen for a hundred and fifty thousand and was sold in two thousand twenty-one for three hundred thousand. The point is that the commercial property is more expensive and rightfully so. Approval of this application will certainly increase the value of this twelve acre parcel to at least five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand dollars simply because of the zone change. That is a classic case of buying residential agricultural land for a cheap price, then flipping it to the detriment of all nearby landowners subject to RA five zoning. The fact that some expansion of the Aspen Heights area is planned is of no consequence. That original subdivision was approved in nineteen oh nine and is not a commercial zone. The lack of affordable housing in White Plain County is an important issue that is being addressed by this board, the city, and private developers. However, this issue does not justify spot zoning and the abandonment of the master zoning plan. There are plenty of commercial lots available for the business proposed by Mr. Bedrin. And the fact that he bought this property and gambled on zone change is not a factor in your decision. If this application is approved, twelve acres out of a sixty-two acre subdivision, RA five, will be lost. The aesthetics of the area will be changed forever and there will be no going back. The remaining landowners will suffer, and I fear there will be no way to stop the future loss of RA five zoning in the area. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Steve L. Bresku.
Okay, so I think at this time, I'll, I'd welcome anyone in the audience who has an opinion one way or the other to address what we've seen from Assessor Hilton and also from Mr. DeBresku. If you would like to come forward and speak, or anybody on the phone would like to speak, that's fine. Otherwise, yes, we'll just have to rely on the information that was provided. Am I right, James?
Yep. You can, you can rely on the information that was provided. Any testimony and your own, and this is specifically in the case law. You are able to rely on your own experience and knowledge of that area. And if one of you has experience and knowledge of that area and shares it with the rest, then everybody can rely on that too.
Well, come on up and state your name.
Hi, Commissioner, my name's Nico Bresku. Um, I'm one of the property owners out on the highway there in the RA five. I just wanted to say, uh, we've been to a couple of meetings with the RPC and they obviously denied this action. I wanted to say my piece that I, I a hundred percent support new businesses in the community, you know? And I think we need more of them, I mean, we, we need lots of different businesses, but just in the right spots. There's plenty of commercial properties out there. This one, even before Mr. Bedrin purchased it, was being built as a commercial property within tentary zone, in my opinion. And like the letter said also, my, uh, the property value thing, it would change overnight into a huge deficit. It would, and decrease my property at the same time. I just, I think there's plenty of lots around. And until the time is that there isn't any available commercial properties, then I would say consider rezoning something like this. But you're losing valuable RA five property when there is, uh, commercial properties available still, so. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tim, do you want to have a shot? Sure, I'll give it. Hi, I'm Tim Bedrin, the owner of Bedrin, what else is? I don't know if you guys want to pass this around. So the property out there, um, there's no more water rights out there. Like whoever's got water rights, they're allowed to have their water rights. Um, as far as for me to irrigate anything, I can't irrigate anything out there. I can never get an irrigation well to, to farm anything out there. As far as the fact that we need housing, we're desperately, I mean, county's about buying houses. I mean, a state build home, there's your half a million dollars right there for one state build home. You know, I have twenty-one different models that I can order from. I really do think that our community desperately needs this to bring doctors here, lawyers, miners, education teachers, I mean, we need everything we can get to come to this community. And for the fact that there's no more water rights out there, I don't think that should be considered a cultural property. I mean, that's just, basically, that's my biggest argument, that I, you think that our community desperately needs this. And that's it, is any questions for me, well, I'm not favored.
Just to be clear, you're in, you're in favor of the changing or?
It's, it's the property.
My property, yes, yes.
I do have some questions.
All right.
Um, I, I have some concerns in regards to the general service person license. Could you explain what that means? Because it came into question in regards to some of the work that you've already done so far as what your limits are.
So I, I have a general service person with installation and I'm the only one licensed.
What does, what does that?
So basically, it entails.
We had, at the, I was there at the planning commission and people had concerns about your ability to do some of the things that you did.
For one, I have access to a general contractor's license. I could work under Jim Renner's license if I needed to to.
I'm talking about you specifically.
My license, any kind of manufactured home, I could do.
Okay, so putting in the septic, where there was two septic tanks that were put in. You said that you did that with the state, but was there anything done in regards to the county?
There's no county permitting, you only had to go deal with the state.
Okay.
I went to the county building inspectors and everybody, and they told me they had nothing to do with that. It's all state.
Okay, okay. So.
The, the concern I would have with that is, is because of the zoning, there is not, it is not required to use a licensed contractor to put in those tanks. If that, this, if we had designated that a commercial property before those tanks were put in, commercial property requires a licensed contractor. And so, so it, that, that is the one thing that kind of raises a red flag to me is, is that we put this in as a, as a, an improvement on a residential property. Now we flip it to commercial, what do we do with those improvements? Are those improvements grandfathered under that and just become automatically accepted? Because any other commercial property is required to use a licensed contractor. So that, that does, that kicks up an issue.
It does.
The thing about the septic issue, so, I don't know, if anyone's on the last agenda, they're trying to put in two hundred lots, you can see on the map around Aspen Heights. So if there's access to the city sewer, obviously I am required to be put on city sewer. So therefore my septic wouldn't even be used. The two hundred lots goes in. You see the sweetwater states and then you see it's on the field or whatever it says on there. But obviously there will, all those houses would be on city sewer. And it wouldn't just be me, it would be everybody that lives in that area that's on the septic. We would all be required to be put on city sewer. So for the septic, I mean, things go through, the dealership.
That, but you can't necessarily approve on the come so far as it being, no telling when that's going to totally take place. I know that they've done some subdivision work and starting with just eleven, uh, homes. So I don't know when that'll go into effect. So I, you know, I'm not sure there. But I was, like what Mr. Barbie said, I was concerned there, um, in regards to the licensure and in regards to the septic tanks, um, working on manufactured homes.
My question to you would be, uh, and I'm thinking of the other property owners. You just mentioned that that was approved and all, then everybody around there would have, would be required to hook up the city water, is that what you said?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know the exact amount of fee that it is.
But my question is, what would the cost be? What would the impact be to all the other property owners around there if they have to go ahead after having a septic system? I don't know what the fees are to the city to hook up the city water. I don't know any of that, but I.
To clarify, Richard, that if, if, if we approve this today, that's not going to require that. He's talking about if they develop further some of that other, uh, some of that other property. So our approval of this won't impact any of that.
Just for my own, for my own benefit, I need to, I would like to know that if it's going to be a financial impact to all the other residents, I mean, I'm sorry.
The developer is taking care of the majority of that.
Okay, got it, okay. I'd still like to know.
Um, I had a question about, uh, the land you're using, um, because I actually don't know how this is going to work. Are you, um, you're just going to be placing model units on this land that people are going to come and look at and then potentially pick out half-built or pick out that one and have it put on the property that they're going to have it on? Is that how it's going to work or are you building a neighborhood on that land?
No, all I'm doing is putting on a few displays for people to see, and I could sell the displays.
That's what I thought.
So it's not like it's impacting, I mean, whatever, the traffic or whatever, like, it's not that much of going to change, you know?
It's a hair of feathers for, uh, for housing.
Yeah, that, yeah, basically, I'm, I'm less than a half mile from our largest auto dealer. You know, I'm less than a half mile from there, or, I mean, you can see it's surrounded three sides commercial. So, I mean, it's not going to make that big of an impact on the property or in the community for that matter.
Uh, Tim, do you have, uh, some documentation that we could look at as far as where you are at the process with whoever you're sourcing the homes from? You know, I don't know what licensing or on that front, or, uh, I would just like to see some of that to know that this is, I guess, well down the tracks and not speaking to some of the concerns that, you know, and I think. speaking to some of the concerns that, you know, and I think it'd be to your benefit that you're just trying to come in here, foot this property and, you know, have the camel's nose under the tent, so to speak. So if you have, could you get that to us or or how, where are you at in all in all of that dealings?
So here's my dealer's license, pass that around, and then my general service, I already have that. So I'm already licensed dealer. There will be a dealership with my license. If I have to go to Yurik County, I mean, it's for me to make money on that property, I could split it in two, put a new house on both ends of it, I'm gonna make money either way. So as far as somebody who's not gonna, it's that I'm gonna make money on the property, like it's today's day and age. You own a house and property, guess what, you have a ton of equity in it, it's just how it goes, you know?
I do have my license.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Tim, where did where did things end up in?